Okay, I have that it is 7:30. So let me get started. I'm Janet Anderson. I called to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, October 20th, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Before I want to go any further, I want to confirm that Kirsten has started recording this meeting, which I can see, and this meeting is also live streaming to YouTube. And and it's on the Lewisboro TV channel. The public can view the meeting there, and we have confirmed that the feed is active and working, I believe. Yes, okay. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Orders, no one is at our usual meeting location at 79 Bowton. I have confirmed, again with Kirsten, our Planning Board Administrator, that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements have been fulfilled. Notice has been placed on the Town of Lewisboro website. Joining me on this Zoom conference from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, Jerome Kerner, Regla Sorsa, Maureen McGuire, and Rich Sklerin. We do have a quorum, and thus we can vote on any members that come before the Board. We also have the Planning and Wetland Consultant, Jan Johansson, and Council, Judson Seibert. I've already mentioned that we that the Planning Board Administrator, Kirsten Conrad, is on this call, and I don't yet see the CAC Chair.
Oh, yeah. John Wolfe is here.
Yeah.
There he is, sorry. Okay, the CAC Chair, John Wolfe, has also joined. Thank you. Okay, the Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, which has been renewed, enables the Planning Board to meet remotely and electronically to function on behalf of the town. In accordance with the executive order, we intend to post both the recording and later a transcript of this meeting to the town website. A recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel, and of course, we will have the meeting minutes to document our actions. We do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. That is the only time we expect to take public comments, and I will describe the process in a few minutes. The public has joined muted and without video until that point. We ask any applicants that are not currently engaging in dialogue to mute their lines. This will help everyone to hear over the inevitable background noises. And to those of you whose lines are open, I remind you that we should do our best to avoid crosstalk, and if possible, to remain muted until it's necessary to talk. To ease the recording of our votes, I will poll the Board members individually. Okay, I want to thank everybody in advance for understanding as we continue to work to improve and learn on this process. Okay, let's get started. Now, the very first item on the agenda is an extension of time request, and I am recused from the first item, so I will ask Jerome to to take that portion.
I will, Janet. So the first item is Calendar 08-12 PB Petricelli, Dagliacca, Oscarita Road, a request for 90-day extension of time to resolution granting preliminary final subdivision plat negative declaration under secret dated October 21st, 2014. And I think that's Michael Serignano is here for that.
Good evening. I know you have a busy agenda, so I'll be brief. For those Board members who were not on the Board when this matter was approved, that final subdivision was approved, I represent Steve and Interesa, the son and daughter of Rudy, the late Rudy Petricelli. Rudy had put this application in front of the Planning Board for subdivision and for a wetland permit to construct a proposed house that he wanted to build for his family. The wetland permit was denied, the subdivision was approved by your Board. Essentially, the subdivision is only memorializing or confirming the separate property boundary lines that the two owners of this undivided property has yet undivided property, although it has subdivision approval. One is the Petricelli family, the children now, and the other is Three Lakes Council, and both property owners by deed had owned different portions or different halves, if you will, of this property. And the subdivision pool simply utilized the deed dividing line between the two owners' properties and granted subdivision plat. We have been unable to date to get the Board of Health to sign the final plat, even though we're not proposing to build anything, because they their regulations require the signature of all owners of the property. And Three Lakes Council has declined to cooperate in that endeavor. With COVID, it's just been very difficult to get a face-to-face meeting, certainly with the Health Department. And with Rudy's passing and his firm is now dissolved, the kids really don't have any engineers that are familiar with this project that can go sit with Board of Health folks. So that's the long version. I was hoping to be shorter. We're asking for an additional extension, which I believe we are entitled to as a right, and we would ask for as long as you're comfortable with, given the COVID pandemic that continues to hamper everybody in all their endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So, Judd, what is the limit of extension that we can offer?
Well, with the change in the town law that was made several years ago, you can continue to extend as long as you see fit. We do this generally in kind of following the old rule in increments generally of 90 or 180 days. We've been doing this one on a succession of 90-day extensions while Michael has had to contend with both Rudy's passing and also, as he mentioned, this sort of catch-22 that the property owner is in with the Health Department. So I think just in light of where we are, I think a 180-day extension in this instance would be helpful. I just I don't see anything happening over the next three months that is going to change the situation. Hopefully, we get into the new year, and a number of things change, hopefully, and we can gain some traction with this.
Right. So having heard that, is there a motion from a member of the Board that would reflect that?
For 180-day extension.
I'll make a motion for 180-day extension.
Motion by Greg, second?
I'll second.
Second, if I read. Any further questions or discussion?
None? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any declining? No?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, with "I'm accused," just a reminder.
Yes, and one recusal from Janet.
Thank you.
Anderson.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay, the next item on the agenda was to be Oak Ridge Commons, but the applicant has asked for us to adjourn that, so we will not have that. So the next item on the agenda is Calendar Number 03-13 PB and Calendar Number 03-16 WP. This is Silver Mine Preserve, Silver Mine Drive and Lockwood Road, South Salem, New York, 10590. This is a subdivision wetland activity and stormwater permits, and they are looking for an extension of time. The letter that came in said a six-month extension, but I think they asked for May, which would be seven. So this would be, if we gave a six-month extension, it would be until April 13th, 2021. And I see Jerry's on the meeting.
Good evening. I hope you've all been well. Jerry Tortorella of Hockerman Tortorella in Wexene. I apologize that I can't count the six clearly. Here's my issue. We, this is an application that was granted for preliminary subdivision approval, and we had been working with the Health Department. Since I submitted my letter, I actually have learned that we did get the plat back from the Health Department. So now we're in a situation where we are working on the application for final approval. But it's unclear to me, and I'm lucky to commit to a finite period of time within which we make that application, just given the demands on all of the design professionals in the field these days, as well as just other uncertainties and things that people can't control. So we would like the extension. We will be working on the application for final approval. I do not anticipate having to request another extension. I think that we will certainly be in position to apply for final well within the six months that I intended to have.
Great, and it's good to hear that there is some forward progress on this. Okay, so I would look for a a motion to grant an extension for the Silver Mine Preserve?
So moved?
All right, Jerome, and this will be until April 13th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, that's second by Maureen. So let me poll Maureen. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Jerome? Rich?
Aye.
Greg? Okay, good. And I also am in favor of this, so the motion passes, and we will see you soon, I hope, Jerry.
Thanks very much. They will, and have good holidays if I don't see you before then.
You too.
You too.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a continuation of a public hearing. So as we start the public hearing, I want to remind people that the purpose of a public hearing is for members of the public to understand the proposal and for the Board to get the concerns and comments of the public. The comments should be addressed to the Planning Board, not to the applicant. A public hearing is not meant to be a dialogue, and in general, the Board will not respond to comments at the public hearing. The Board will take public input into consideration as we continue to review the application. Again, let me put on the record that because of Executive Order 202.10, we are not meeting at a common location. We are holding the meeting via video and telephone in accordance with Executive Order 202.15. We invited public comments by email before the meeting. The public can comment during the meeting by sending an email to planning@lewisburorgov.com. In addition, the public can speak at the meeting. If you want to speak at the meeting, please raise your Zoom hand. To do that, if you're on Zoom, cursor at the bottom of the window, and you should see an image of people labeled "Participants." If you click on that, you'll get a panel on the right-hand side with icons at the bottom, and then you can click "Raise Hand." Participants who have raised their hand will show up on the host screen, and the host will then unmute you and tell you you have the floor. You may also have to unmute yourself if your microphone isn't active. If there is anyone that dialed in on a phone, and I don't believe we have one, you can raise your hand to indicate you want to talk by pressing star nine. We will ask people to give their name and address upon entering and to keep their comments to three minutes. Okay, so with that, we, this is for Calendar Number 91-19 WP, Calendar Number 10-19 SW, the MacArthur and Salazar residents at 40 Old Pond Road in South Salem. We had a public hearing that opened on August 18th, 2020. It was continued on September 15th and adjourned until tonight. We have received some additional submissions and some information from the zoning board. And I see that that Jerry has already started to screen share, so I will turn this over to him now.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. I'm here this evening with Billy McCarthy and his project team, including Michael Serignano and Stephen Coleman and Alan Pilch, and I think Teo Segwenzu may be joining us as well. As you said, we've been working through the comments and trying to satisfy all the outstanding issues that have been have come up, and we'd like to briefly go through them. I'll just briefly, you know, this is our site, this is the existing condition, this is the existing home that will be taken down, this is the existing garage that will be added on to to create the new home, and you see the photographs of the of the condition of the property. Let me go right to the before we get going, we do recognize that we do have to go to the zoning board. I think Michael is scheduled for next week to go to the zoning board, and that is because this right-of-way, if you will, this piece of property that runs down to Old Pond Road, it needs to be this frontage area right here, it needs to be 25 feet, and in the existing conditions, it's 20 feet. So Michael will be discussing that with the ZBA next week. Other than that, the project has been granted the various variances that it needed previously because it's in the existing condition. It was too close to the property ledge in, you know, in the back to the patios. There were four variances that were granted. That's all done and over with. So now we just need to clear up that frontage variance, and so the project can move forward. Moving on to our site plans, the site plan, of course, is to come in, remove this building that's down in this area, build this lakeside cabana, if you, it's what it's called. It's about eight or nine feet above grade here. What's, as a result of this, Billy McCarthy has elected to take all this existing development away from the edge of the lake and use his cabana here. He'll have his patio about eight or nine feet up. There's a retaining wall here with some steps to access the lower area, and then there's some steps to get up to what will become the house. And that will be accessed. There'll be a garage that will park underneath, and then it will come up, and there's some patios. We worked through this. We spent a lot of time on this, and Alan Pilch will be talking a little bit about the stormwater and how we handled that. But one of the, one of the things that I think was a, was that came out of the site visit when we had way back when with the Planning Board, was this water coming rushing down this hill and rushing right down this driveway into the lake. And that we felt was kind of a big problem. And of course, this, this proposal takes this whole driveway, this sluice, if you will, that was just shucking water right into the lake untreated. And what we've done now is we've created a diversion up on top. So all the, we call this the water that's coming down toward the development. We're going to capture that. We have a staked corlog in this area. It's going to bring the water over. There's a drainage, existing drainage ditch here. And when we're in the field with the Planning Board, it was discussed that, wouldn't it be great if we could renovate that and get that water around, bring it over to this eroded gully? We would shore up this eroded gully by putting a Gabion dam, which is nothing more than a wire basket filled with rocks. So the idea is the water hits it, slows down, breaks the velocity, drops the sediment, lets the water leave at a non-erosive rate. And so once that's in place, that'll be one of the first things that goes, that happens with this project. So as they're building that, you know, we don't have to worry about this water coming through and washing out all the new work that's going to be taking place. These are the removals, of course. This is the, all the area down below. All of this is the removal that's coming out. We worked through the erosion control plan along with Alan Pilch, who has done the stormwater management. But again, here's that diversion. There'll be, you know, silt fences, silt fences, corlogs, hay bales, sediment traps down below, belt and suspenders type thing, silt fence backed up by corlogs, everything we can do to try to capture anything from, you know, this is the grading limit line you see in that dashed area. And, you know, so what we're going to be trying to do is we're going to be trying to take the, to capture anything where we have to disturb the soil. We have redundant erosion controls going throughout the area. So we think we can, we can work on that, and we can be able to manage that. And again, I think the big thing is to get this big wash of water that's coming down toward this thing, and to get this water and get it to go around the development. And then all we have to worry about is the water that actually falls on it, and that'll be much more easily managed than if, you know, we were getting washed out from above. One of the comments that came up was the elevation of the flood zone. We did put the FEMA map on there. I'm going to ask Alan Pilch when he gets into his stormwater discussion to talk a little bit about that, because the comment is asking for elevation, and Alan has explained to me in Zone X that there is not a designated elevation, but Alan's much more familiar with that. So I'll be asking Alan to talk about that when he gets toward his presentation. My office and Stephen Coleman have worked together to develop the wetland mitigation plan, which essentially is designed to revegetate the site once everything is back in place. We've tried to do it to try to, to try to provide a one-to-one impact to mitigation ratio, and I think we've, we've done a good job. We've, you know, listened to the comments of the Board, and I know Jan had some comments. And so we've added more plantings down below. So what we've done is we've only left a little area of the shoreline here that will be open for the family to get access to the water. We do need to add the location of the dock, and I apologize that slipped through the cracks. Billy asked me to put that on the plan, and I did not get that. So we will be showing that, and, but that'll just be a floating dock type thing. It's not going to be anything anchored to the bottom of the lake. So we have plantings going all along. We have trees coming back in. We're going to be planting up above the wall. We're planting around the house. This is kind of a depression area here. This will be planted in a bunch of fern. We have, you know, all kinds of native shrubs and trees. And then we have on these slopes here, we have native seed mixes on these slopes that will be sown in, and, you know, we'll get these slopes graded out and stabilized and netted and planted. And then that's what's happening in here. So the only area where there's actually going to be some grass, it's down here, the flat area for the, for the children to play on. There's a little area of grass here. We are going to be doing some wetland mitigation plantings here, and we're going to be pulling out some of the invasives in this area. I know that one of the comments was to provide more information on the protocols on the mitigation and the long-term maintenance. And I thought at this time, maybe Steve, would you want to talk a little bit about the mitigation concept and how we're going to be, you know, implementing this and what some of the protocols will be? Steve, can you hear, can you hear me? Can anyone hear me?
We can hear you. Steve?
Steve's microphone isn't on. He's muted.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Based on feedback that we receive from the Planning Board, you know, at the prior meetings, we've changed the strategy for the management of the invasive plants on the Westchester Land Trust property. We're no longer going to be using, you know, fire as a management tool. The Japanese barberry will instead be mechanically cut, and then the remaining root system will be treated with a glyphosate herbicide. And, you know, so it will prevent any disturbance of the existing soil substrate. And then once, once the Japanese barberry is taken care of, then we looked at how to mitigate that area the most effectively. And, you know, so the strategy is to look at how we can maximize, you know, nutrient uptake and intention of any nutrients, you know, further up slope before it gets down near the water. And so we have a combination of native ground covers and a shrub layer proposed along the drainage channel, and where needed, drainage channel will be stabilized, you know, with some stone check dams and, you know, just to maximize the opportunity to allow infiltration to occur and settling. And then down, you know, so overall, what we looked at is really trying to maximize, you know, the diversity of the plant material, you know, so that we can improve the habitat, but also, more importantly, improve the function for water quality maintenance. And I think we've accomplished that with, you know, pretty dense plantings of ground covers and perennials and native shrubs and trees where we could place them. In terms of monitoring, we've recommended a three-year monitoring, you know, program, you know, for the land trust, which they were comfortable with, and have supported in their, you know, correspondence back, you know, to the, you know, to the applicant. I mean, that's a real short, you know, rundown, but, you know, as Jerry mentioned, you know, the combination of the stormwater plan with the redundant measures, the use of the coconut fiber logs and the planting will really give an opportunity to take a site that pretty much had no infiltration or no real habitat and turn it into, you know, a really highly functioning, you know, system that, you know, can really, you know, really make an impact on water quality. I mean, if you remember the site, you know, with the driveway and, you know, we had runoff going, you know, just, you know, impervious surfaces and runoff going directly into the lake with minimal treatment. So, you know, I think overall, we're going to see a tremendous, you know, benefit, you know, for the lake and also for the, you know, for the McArthers as well, because they will be the beneficiary of the beautiful gardens and, you know, landscaped areas that will be created.
Steve, I do have a question for you. I know that there's down in the, close to the lake is where there's also, there's going to be stormwater basically level spreaders, and you have some vegetation there as well. Is there any, you know, is there any special kind of plantings that are required because of that, or is that, is that, is it not that much of an impact that you, that the sort of ordinary selection of products of plants is fine?
What we try to do is really, my experience is that denser the ground cover layer is, you know, it really provides the, you know, the last measure for filtering anything that may come from the level spreader areas. I mean, for the Land Trust property, we felt that the changes that are made further up slope will slow down and reduce the rate of flow, so that when it gets down towards the bottom, there's ample opportunity with the amount of vegetation, existing vegetation, and then, you know, the shrubs that will be planted in the ground cover, you know, and then by the, where the stormwater, I think you can see in the plan where the rectangles are shown on the, you know, near the, what side is that? The western?
East.
Eastern.
The west and the east of those trees.
You know, the overflow from that, I mean, we purposely tried to create a really dense, you know, planting in that corner so that if any water does come, and then during the bigger storm events, it'll still, you know, some of it will be, will be taken up, you know, through, that area is kind of serving more as a vegetated filter, but it also will be a pollinator garden and a, you know, it'll also be, you know, create a good network once the roots get established to absorb more of the water and, you know, and, you know, soften, you know, the rate of flow that could occur beyond that. So I think the vegetation will work. I mean, I, you know, my, our preference was to create more diversity instead of, you know, doing, you know, like one species of grass or, you know, the things to, to maximize the, you know, the functionality of it.
And what you can see is that, you know, we do have the woody shrubs in here, but we have a lot of these, these perennials that you see in these, in these clouded areas, and these areas will spread, and they will continue to thicken and fill that area in. So this will become quite dense, and it's also going to be quite showy with some of the things we got there. But I think maybe this would be a good time for Alan to pick up with the stormwater, because Alan, do you anticipate, do you anticipate overflows on a regular basis, or do you think you got a conservative design here?
I think that's a, hi, Alan Pilch, I think that's a pretty conservative design because there is, you know, at least some attempt to trap some of the runoff that's coming off of the roof of the building, and the flows aren't really all that large that go to these level spreaders. Maybe I could just see the, actually, the latest iteration of the design was response to comments we received from the engineering consultant, Mr. Tremelli and Mr. Johansson, which took the runoff, the runoff from the roof of this portion of the upper the runoff from the roof of this portion of the upper portion of the of the residence goes into, call it a depressed planting area, which is really functionality like a rain garden, will capture the one year storm in there, which is nearly three inches of precipitation. And the outfall from there, instead of just going to the drainage system, will actually go to the catch basin, which goes into then a hydrodynamic separator. I'm just saying that that's how it's been modified. And into the hydrodynamic separator, which also removes coarse sediment, any leaves or anything that comes out through the rain garden. Then it is conveyed into a subsurface detention system, which is what this is. This is in order to accomplish the peak rate attenuation of the one through the 25 year storm as required by the town. And the outflow goes to a level spreader, which again, when designed is 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 placed really in the midst of this very dense vegetation. And as Steve says, it will help dissipate it, it will help infiltrate it into the ground and provide an additional level of treatment of the runoff. Because it will be, some of it will infiltrate into the ground there. And there will also be, the term I like to use is biological uptake of of any nutrients that are in there into the vegetation. And that's essentially how this storm system works. A portion of the, so the only portion of the runoff of the new residence, it doesn't, I'll just say, the driveway goes into the catch basin, which goes to the hydrodynamic separator. So if there's any, you know, on likelihood, but if there was any oils or grease, that'll get trapped in there. And that's a good thing. It's much better than what's happening here presently with the driveway being, you know, so close to the lake and there's no treatment whatsoever. So it is a very big improvement over what what is there presently. With regard to, by the way, what the comment too about the flood zone. The FEMA mapping for Lake Wakabak indicates that it's in Zone X and Zone X does not have elevations that are actually determined for the lake. So all it does is it shows a, you know, I'll call it a color blob essentially that covers a portion of the site, but there's no elevations associated with it. So, you know, if you go from property to property, if you actually took a look at the actual elevations of what's being shown here, it'll be all over the place. Just because, you know, the topography may be going up and down, but they just show a single blob that's on it. So we can illustrate it on the map of what it is, but it really has no relationship to actually where the flood zone would be during the 100 year storm. Only because FEMA has not mapped a elevation for that 100 year storm at all. That's why it's assigned to Zone X. They just haven't, you know, perhaps it's, they haven't done calculations for it. I just want to make that clarification. So although on this map, you see the extent of this blue blob, if you will, it's not related to elevations on the property. It's just, it's just a a representation of where FEMA estimates the 100 year storm would be, not really taking into account elevations, because they have not calculated it. So if you were actually follow the shoreline from property to property, normally you would anticipate on a lake, it would all essentially be at the same elevation. That's not what you find here.
Janet, just on that FEMA comment, the property is in the flood zone. It is Zone X. What the town law requires are flood development permit regulations. That if your property, regardless of development, in the zone, if the property is within the 100 year flood plane, which it is, you're required to get a flood development permit from the building. You're also required to get an elevation to the building. And that's a document that's helped by engineer surveyor that's by which certifies the elevations of buildings. So that, the props of the comment, I mentioned it before. And that's what needs to be done. It's a flood development permit. What elevation certificate the property's location.
We'll, we'll, we'll work with the surveyor and Alan on that and we'll get that elevation certificate to the satisfaction of the building department.
That's not something that needs to be done at this stage. Or, you know, it could be done prior to the issuance of the building. Just wanted to put it out there.
I see, I see Jerome has a hand up.
Jan, does that flood elevation permit affect any, any structure, even if it's not habitable and it's not a residence?
I believe in this case, it would be the cabin and the house. The cabana and the house.
The cabin, yeah.
You know, both those buildings are so far above, you know, the lake. Not an issue, but what the law requires is that you get the elevation. Right, right.
And this is anecdote, but it might be. I know that some of the people in order to get insurance who live very close, houses are very close to the edge of the shore, have had to have surveys done that indicate where the, you know, the height above a certain, a certain level is, a certain elevation is. So there's probably some experienced surveyors around who have have worked on Lake Wakabak before. Sorry.
That's why we need the elevation certificate is so important and beneficial to the owner. Demonstration of your elevation of your build. It's not required to have flood. Buildings are so far away from the floods.
Jerome.
Yeah, I want to say I feel this is an exemplary project. And it raises the bar for some future submissions that develop lake properties. I'm really extremely impressed by the professionalism and the the willingness of the applicant to move forward with this kind of improvement. I would, I'm not sure where we are in the procedure this evening, but I'd like to move that we close the public hearing and see this project move forward to final approval.
Well, I think before we close it, let's see if there's anyone in the public. There are a number of people on this, this Zoom meeting. And see if anyone wants to raise their hand. And I also want to ask, perhaps while we're, let me talk about how to raise your hand again. If you're on a phone, and I think we now do have somebody on the phone, if you want to talk, you hit star nine. Otherwise, again, if you, if you wish to have a comment on this application, you may raise your hand by clicking on participants and then there should be a little icon that has a hand on it and you can raise your hand. So while we're seeing, and Kirsten has told me that we have not gotten any emails at this point, any new emails with comments on this. But perhaps I can ask Jan to go over your memo a little bit.
I think since the last meeting, I had met out in the field with and representatives of the land trust. Jerry Barrett. And we walked the subject property the second or third time I was on that site. Had an opportunity to walk the land trust property for the first time. And it was helpful to have representatives of the land trust there in the field. And we talked about some of the protocols for the mitigation, removal of the invasives. And we were both on the same page that we're concerned about the fire or burn approach. Our berry, just given the location of the property. You know, difficult nature to get to and its steepness and the fact that it's surrounded by, you know, a lot of ways. So I think that the the new approach for the removal, the mechanical removal and the treatment with the herbicide is in the right direction for sure. And the other kind of main item was the the license agreements or, you know, the intense letters of intent from the land trust. Making sure it includes anything that was being proposed. And I found that the new letters that were submitted did just that. Of course, we'll need the license agreements and they could be developed over time as potential conditions approval. But I was satisfied with the letters of intent that were submitted by the land trust and felt that they dealt with everything that we've been talking about, including the future use of the patio. And there's going to be some, some permissions given to the applicant to continue to use that. So I thought that was important. The overall mitigation plan, I think, is in great shape. I don't have any real comments on what's being proposed. I think we could fine tune some of the the maintenance protocols and plans, especially for the long term maintenance of the mitigation and making sure it complies with the town's policies and durations for for maintenance. And reporting to the planning board on a yearly basis, the three years is, I think, appropriate. I just want to see that in. The applicant also submitted verbally to me and it was a petition with installing sprinkler system in the house. That was a mitigation for the fact that they're on a very narrow private road and kind of remote. Be a difficult time in trying to access the property and turning around fire apparatus. So the South Salem Fire Department had written a letter requesting the sprinkler system and the applicant has I had put in my memo, the residence and the cabana. I just wanted to make sure that was correct and not sure if it was, oh, the residence was included. I wasn't sure if the cabana was. And I might have misspoke on that. So I'd like the applicant to clarify that this evening. Some additional, just comments, kind of repetitive comments on the dock and the seawall and getting some more specificity from the applicant, exactly what needs to be or what's going to happen on the seawall repair. Getting a plan for that or a detail for that. There are still outstanding approvals. The health department, zoning board. The zoning board acted on some of the area variances, the dimensional variances already indicated that they're going back to the ZBA variant. And also the the 280A variance, which is variance of the New York State town law. It requires a variance if you're seeking to obtain a building permit on a private road. So there's two variances, I believe, that are still outstanding. Any retaining walls greater than four feet need to be designed by an engineer. We're looking for construction details and specs on those. And some of these kind of in the weeds comments could certainly expect to be done, you know, prior to the issuance of a building permit, but not usual that they're not done at this stage. The survey has been submitted a couple of times, but we do not have a signed and sealed copy. The surveys that, you know, keep on getting submitted are unsigned, so we're looking for certified copy. We talked, we talked about the flood plane and the certificate. That can be handled in the future. The rest are really the weeds, motor content. I don't think I need to bore you with very technical. And after reviewing the, you know, in the office, I don't think there's anything here that can't be resolved. And it's something that we're comfortable handling as a, as a condition that's appropriate.
Okay. And I will just comment that we did receive the ZBA resolutions for the for the prior meeting, for the prior approval. So we do have that document. Does any other members of, I do not see any hands raised or any comments from the public or requests for comments from the public. So any other board members have any comments they, or questions? Okay. So did I hear something? I guess Jerome has, go ahead, Jerome.
Yeah, I'd like to restate my motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And that was a second by Maureen. I'm gonna, if it's all right, stop the screen sharing so I can see people. Oops, can I do that?
I think I need to do it. Let me just.
So so we have a motion by Jerome and a second by Maureen to close the public hearing. So I will go and ask Paul, the board, Maureen.
Hi.
Jerome.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
Greg.
Well, did we have any discussion on that motion?
I asked if anybody wanted to say anything.
Well, no, I didn't think it was related to closing the hearing because you think you're going to find out if there are any people here wanted to speak on this, which I don't think we've done.
We asked.
I've asked and I have confirmed with Kirsten that there have been no emails that have come in. You know, either prior to this meeting or during the meeting.
Let's, no one's raised their hand. Zoom.
Okay, so Greg, I think.
All right, I'll vote to closing here.
Okay, and I do as well. So the motion carries and we've, we have a we have the public hearing closed. We will hear about you are going for the ZBA approval at the end of this month. So is it an appropriate time to ask Jan to prepare a resolution? Would feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I need a motion for this judge?
No, no. Right. And I mean, applications like this that are subject to public hearing and you know, have been through the type of review, we typically ask Jan to prepare a resolution for board adoption rather than having the permit sent to, you know, an administrative approval. So if it's sort of, there's a consensus that Jan should prepare it. Yeah, the board should indicate so and Jan can do that and we can be back in November.
Okay, so I think I've heard from three or four, anybody, everybody okay with having Jan prepare the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Okay, Jan, you have work to do. And I think we are now, unless there are any other comments, I want to say thank you to the MacArthur team and we will see you in November.
Janet, can we get clarification from the applicant on the sprinkler system on the cabana?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Jen. We, we discussed as a team, we're definitely having the sprinklers on the house. We feel that the lake cabin, because it's going to be a very simple structure without any space to put any tanks on top, plus it's not going to be an habitable brought, you know, I guess structure, we thought it would probably be okay if we just do it on the residence. I also want to say I do have the the sign and stamp survey and I apologize, nobody told me I needed to submit this with the application, but it's sitting on my desk. So, you know, unless Jan, you think, or anybody from the board thinks we should have sprinklers on the, on the lake cabin as well. But we don't think, because again, it's not going to be an habitable structure. You know, we think the residence would probably suffice for that as a commitment.
Let me be clear, it will be a habitable structure. It just won't be slept in on a regular basis like a home.
That's what I meant.
Is the bedroom on a floor that has a exit on it?
It's got a door directly, directly out. You don't have to go down. You can go straight out.
You can go straight out from the bedroom.
Yeah.
Are there any open flame devices, fireplace or cooking?
No, no cooking. We, you know, we have a basically we've gone through this comment, but it's basically just a sink and, you know, a small kind of fridge, but there's no no range or stove or anything like that inside the property.
But you do have a fireplace, right?
Yeah, I plan to have a fireplace.
Yeah. Would you consider gas with an enclosure?
I mean, guys, I can do the sprinklers. It's fine. I mean, the only thing is we need to figure out where to put a tank. And again, it's this very small structure, so no need to deal with having an area to put a tank. You know, I personally thought it was probably you know, reasonable not to have it, but I'm perfectly, as I've been through the process, if you guys feel it's needed, I'm more than happy to do it. It's really, you know, I'm really looking forward to move forward.
Perhaps you could check with the building inspector, he might accept a modified sprinkler using domestic water for that structure, which is not habitable per se. He might accept.
Sure. I guess, I mean, Jan, for your standpoint, I guess I'm willing to do whatever I'm advised to do from this board and the building inspector. That's what I would say.
I don't have a preference either way, I just want to know how to, you know, prepare the resolution. So it's not this evening, certainly by next month, we should have some conclusion on that and I can open ended in the resolution. And if everybody wants to think about it a little bit, we can come back November with a definitive.
Oh, give us a couple of weeks, we'll get you an answer.
Right. I mean, I, I think my primary concern is the ability of people to get out. I mean, unfortunately, if you lose the building, you lose the building, but I want people to be safe. So you know, I'm thinking about the, I think there's access from both levels or exit, basically from both levels. But yes, if you will, if you will think a little bit about that and we can we can ask Jan to make the resolution vague, I guess, and/or so that in two versions and we can put in whichever is agreed to. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Then I'm going to move on. The next item on the agenda is a sketch plan review, calendar number oh, three dash twenty PB and calendar number thirty seven dash twenty WP. This is the Gossip Brothers Nursery. They have appeared before us on August eighteenth and September fifteenth. I should say first, so it's Gossip Brothers Nursery on one, two, oh, two, Route thirty five, South Salem. And it's an application for site development plan approval and the wetland activity permit approval for an existing nursery with a, and this will have be going to the ZBA for approval of a winery. We have some lead agency responses and a new submission since last month. So I don't know if you want to, maybe Michael, it sounds like you're ready to present something.
Well, I think I'm going to let Tim take the lead here because he's really shepherding the site plan work. As the board knows, there's never been a comprehensive approved site plan for the nursery and and I think with other sites in town, when new construction came up, thinking of Rings End, I'm thinking of King Lumber and some other sites where there has never been an approved site plan, the planning board takes the new opportunity to get one. And so essentially, it's, we start with basically as good positions that have been proven to work well for decades. So I'll let Tim take it from there. And there are some minor improvements or changes being proposed as well.
Thank you, Michael. Evening Chair Anderson and members of the board. My name's Tim Cronin and my office put together the plan that for the site plan approval for the Gossip Brothers Nursery. Joining me tonight, the official Michael are Tom and William Gossip and as representing nursery and John Vulo, who is the one, the person responsible for the winery. Since our last meeting, actually the August meeting, we received a review memo from Jan Johansson. We addressed those comments in advance of this meeting and we received a second memo from Jan asking for some additional information or some clarification. We've looked over that memo and there are some things that we would like to discuss with the board and I don't know what the most advantageous way to do that would be. Do we go through point by point or do we bring up the issue? Do you feel we just need some clarification on? What do I do? Jeremy, did I, did I, microphone muted?
No, we can hear you, Tim. And Tim is asking how you'd like him to proceed. There's some, there's some open issues that need some feedback from the board and consultants. So it's your call how you want to proceed, whether you want Jan to go through his comments or Tim to point out open issues.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was muted. So I think if we could ask Jan to go through the the highlights of the memo. I think there are some questions on there that would be helpful to have us understand and discuss a bit.
First, just for the understanding, I had prepared resolution declaration of lead agency for this evening. Before we leave tonight, we review it and act on it. The board had declared its intent to be lead agency a couple of months ago. We circulated to the government agencies, none of the involved objected to the planning board being the lead. And thirty days is past circulation. So it's ready for you to declare yourself as lead agency. So that's out there.
Yeah, Jan, it's Judd. I just, you broke up and I think just to clarify that there was no objection voiced by any of the other involved agencies.
Correct.
And or no response yet. It was just your audio broke up. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Hopefully it clears up. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Since the last board meeting, I walked the property with Beth Evans. We walked the wetland boundary line, our site. I confirm the wetland boundary line as being accurate. No issue. We went over some of the proposed mitigation and and she indicated to me that there was a desire to focus on my on the nursery building rather, which is exactly what they did in the review plan and it's a very nice plan. I don't have any comments on its native species. I think it'll be a nice showcase nursery and it'll certainly benefit the pond and running wetland. So I'll just go through the comments and if Tim, feel free to jump in if there's a comment that you want to further discuss. I might as well just do it. The application has been referred to the director for zoning compliance. I believe the building inspector has written to the board once identifying some comments. The, since Joe had reviewed that the plan has evolved. I mean, there's a lot more information than there was previously. And he may want to take another look, maybe it eliminates some questions. The plans have come a long way since it was first referred to him. So I recommend that he have another look at it.
Jan, did we send that to the building inspector or does the planning board?
We send it directly to Joe. Hard copy and digital.
All right.
But also set up Zoom meeting if you want to have a call with the three of us, it's fine.
All right.
Second comment dealt with some of the historical records on the property. The applicant did submit some prior building permits, certificates of occupancy, plans, but those COs zoning board resolutions for the nursery in nineteen seventy three. And I think at that time nurseries were allowed by special permit through the ZBA. And that's kind of the avenue in which use was approved. So I think those resolutions are important to see, and I'd ask that the applicant submit the resolution.
I've already requested those of the zoning board and the zoning board secretary is working on it.
For number two, so the information we submitted is the COs for the house and for the site plans that going back to the eighties. That information is okay. And this comment would be addressed once Michael gets the resolutions from the zoning board?
Yeah, I would just, you know, the two plans submitted to him, I, you know, they don't really reflect what's on the property today. I didn't know which permit they went along with. You know, they were kind of, it was kind of I wasn't sure what they were all about. So if they're fines, if those two resolutions refer to a certainly prepare, you know, submit the plan that was referenced in those resolutions. If they don't, then you're fine. You've submitted everything that the building department has, but we need those two resolutions.
All right, we'll cross reference the two, the resolutions to the plans. And, and Michael, do you think the zoning board would actually have copies of the site plans going back to those resolutions?
I asked for both the resolutions and any site plans in their files.
All right.
That's being searched.
Section two, twenty forty three, six of the section that deals with wineries. And there's a bunch of specific missions and standards that the applicant has to we had asked that they go, you know, line by line, here's the requirement, this is how we're addressing it. The applicants indicated that to the ZBA, which is understandable, they're the ones that are issuing the special permit, but the boards issuing the deck, which needs to be prior to the ZBA acting and I think that information's relevant to the planning board as well. So I'd ask that that be prepared.
No problem there. We have to make the case, the zoning board will have to make the case to you as well.
The applicant did provide a more robust business plan to the landscape nursery aspect and the winery. There was, we did request in our prior memo that they any outdoor seating in connection with the winery. That was the one item that wasn't included in the business. That could just be clarified. There was, appeared to be a number of seats associated with the winery. The last application indicated that ten seats. We counted a total of thirty on the architectural plans that were submitted. This is, I believe, the first time the architectural floor plan. And there was thirty seats.
Jan's cutting out a little bit here and again, is that just me? Was that everybody?
No.
Yes, everybody. I don't know if you can get closer, Jan, perhaps, or?
If I'm having an internet connection issue or if it's
Well, that's better.
Okay. There was a change in the number of seats associated with the wine. Prior application indicated a total of ten seats where the the last submission illustrated a total of thirty seats on the architectural plans. I believe this is the first time we're seeing the architectural plans. But it was indicated on the application materials that the winery would be ten seats. That may impact parking. I don't know if it impacts the the design of the size of the holding tank. I don't necessarily have any concerns. It was just a difference in the two submissions.
Jan, stepping back from that point and I guess the other ones as well. Is it possible for us to submit to you our architectural plans and our business plan and that in advance of the deadline to the planning board so you can look at it? Say it's okay, say you need more information. This way, you know, we can, we know that our next submission we've already discussed with you and essentially have addressed your concern, your satisfaction, and then you link that to the planning board. Because if we wait for the last, we wait for the submission, the formal submission, we could be submitting something that you know, generates another question, which we could easily address, but we just like to nip that in the button and sort of get everything in order so that the next submission, we've already had our dialogue with you and you're on board with what we're presenting.
Yeah, that's fine. So long as there's anything we need to take a look at.
Oh yeah, perfect. Yeah, we'll definitely do that. Absolutely. Yeah, that'll, that'll help expedite. Because you and I can talk every other day, every third day, once we get information and once everything's on board and you're cool with it, then we can formalize the submission.
Okay. Not a problem. Hey Jan, this is Billy Gossip speaking. Just to clarify yourself and the board, those architectural plans can be modified to meet the original application. So that shouldn't be an issue.
Well, you should do what
We just need to know what's, what's what the proposal is.
Right. You should do what you want to do. I mean, so let us know what you want to do. Obviously, you don't want to have a plan that is not in with what you want. It's just it looked like there were twenty six seats in the greenhouse and four at a little bar that was either inside or outside, not clear. And I think that would be, it just would be helpful to know if that's what you plan, then, then we should know it.
Next comment really just dealt with clarification. The outside perimeter of the parking areas and driveways, just using a different maybe line weight or something on that on the plans, identifying all the different surfaces, whether they're dirt or gravel or paved, providing connections of the width of the driveway and driveway curb cuts. Identifying any of the surface materials in the developed portions of the site. I expect that there's tractor trailer deliveries to the site. And if they could just demonstrate how the tractor trailer enters and leaves the site and demonstrate that those areas are, you know, those movements aren't affecting proposed parking areas.
Well, Jan, they might because if a tractor trailer, if a tractor trailer comes in, it's primarily coming in well before business, you know, seven, seven thirty. And it's going to pull straight in through the entrance and pull to the western side of the site, offload the material, back up and then leave. And it could for more, if there's a car parked there, it could be blocking that car in, but if the car needs to leave, then the tractor trailer will just, you know, make an adjustment and move or allow it to leave.
But I'm not saying blocking the car, but does it hit if a car's parked there, can they make this lane and not hit the car?
Oh, sure, yeah. Tom knows, Tom knows, Tom's been doing that for forty years. So, yeah.
Hitting cars? Yeah. And you know, I'm sure this is not my experience with landscape nurseries and I'm sure maybe Tom's got it nailed down, but they seem to have very little control of when plant material gets to them, you know, and when they come into the site. If that, I'm going and figure out a way where they that's great, but I think we have to design your plan to ensure that if it comes in during, when those parking spots filled, that it can make those changes. And again, not block the space, but not hitting a car.
No, that's, that's in everybody's best interest.
The next one, I think, had to do with the land bank parking. There's a total of twenty seven parking spaces required according to the applicant's calculation. And that needs to be confirmed by the let's assume that it's correct. They are proposing twenty one active parking spaces on the property. So that's a shortfall of they're proposing to land bank, I think it's a total of twenty one spaces. Means excessive. They only need an additional set. Reading their business plans, it didn't look like there was ever going to be a time Reading their business plans, it didn't look like there was ever going to be a time where you might have forty cars on the site. So that, that was just, if you can explain the need to land bank the twenty-one spaces. I'd like you to do that.
You know, Jan, that may be twice or three times a year when they're selling pumpkins on Halloween and Christmas trees at Christmas. And that, you know, Tom, Tom can expand on that, but that may be the time where, you know, maybe we do buff up a little bit and go into those additional land banks. But I just wanted to show additional, just in case there was any question with additional cars parking on the property. And we certainly have the area for that.
Yeah, maybe you call them something other than land banked, those, those extra parking spaces. Because that term has some real meaning from like the zoning code perspective, like you have the right to develop them as real parking spaces in the future.
How about I just take the label off and we show six land banked and be done?
That's fine, or you can, and you can just say, you know, overflow parking in certain areas. So on the occasion, you're, you know, something, you have an event there or something, you have some overflow parking. And, you know, Tom's just moving material around to make that happen.
All right, that's fair, we'll call it overflow.
Next one just dealt with the accessible parking spaces. Making sure that meet, oh, the access way being, you know, dimension, the minimum of four feet. All the signage that's required for the handicap parking spaces, the maximum grades, that, that type of thing. And then maybe if the applicant would just, applicant could just clarify why accessible spaces are perpendicular while the angles are angled. It seems like if there's a one-way traffic circulation pattern proposed, then it tends to have them all angled, though, I don't know, that's a question.
The, if I, if I might, and Tom, you can chime in. But the, as far as the perpendicular space for the handicap, we just think that would be easier for someone who may be handicapped to the driver's side. As compared to having it on that angle where it's actually, the door is actually going with the grade and you're almost fighting the grade a little bit to open that door. So, I mean, it seemed, it seemed like a reasonable approach for us. And as far as the handicap, as far as the angled spaces, Tom just felt as though, you know, on those days or moments when it does get crowded, it just makes it a little bit easier for cars to back up. If they sort of have that angled in, and it just makes them, it makes it a little bit smoother for them to back up into the, the exit lane, if you will.
Right, less of a maneuver, it'll, it'll eliminate an extra maneuver. So when they back up, they're in a better position to move forward toward the exit.
Yeah, I think the angled spaces makes sense, it's a one-way pattern, right?
Yep.
Is it designated one-way? Are there one ways, is there one-way signage on the curb cuts?
Well, we have entrance-exit signs, and that works out well, as far as the parking. And especially when they go to leave, just that, it just is an added benefit to have those angular spaces much easier.
Okay. No problem. And then the, was, they have a nice detail of like an Belgium block curb that's going to kind of designate the front of each parking space. We talked about the parking lot being gravel, we wanted these spaces to be gravel in the field. They chose to block detail, it'd be nice, wondering if they could connect that to the other kind of few sides of the far perimeters of the, those few banks, or few rows of parking. So it would be defined the two winds and along those parking spaces.
Okay. You know, that, the one, one issue with that, even though these are low reveal, more like just a visual thing, it's not really a curb. You know, it's going to be low reveal at a wheelbarrow or, you know.
Yeah, I think they could, I think that could be flush even, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's an inch or two, so.
Yeah.
All right, just, I'm just, yeah, that'd be fine, we can show, we'll show those, show those at the head of each parking space. And then at the east and west ends, if you will, of the six space bank and eight state spank or whatever it may be, all right.
This one, just out there was some, in some of the proposed parking areas, there's currently, you know, just based on aerial imagery, like material sorting bins and nursery display areas. I know that the applicants designated on the plan where there's going to store plant material. But if there's going to be a relocation of any bins, we should, we should see that on the plan.
And Tom, what do you have bins for, primarily like mulch, seasonal mulch or? Are you dealing with like stones and crushed gravel and all?
There is loose, there are some loose materials depending on what time of year it is. We offer up topsoil and several mulches as well. And at the moment, they're freestanding piles. Although in the back, we do have an opportunity where they are backed up by some, some bin type structures, just to keep the material intact. So I guess we'll indicate where those are and exactly how we use them as well.
Okay.
If anything's getting relocated, you're going to have to reposition where you typically store those, those materials, then just.
Yes, will do.
Hey Jan?
Yeah.
This starts to sound a lot like a work session. And I'm wondering if there are any issues that the planning board needs to weigh in on, other than, you know, going through this checklist stuff with Tim. Might not be the best use of our time.
Okay, let me hit, I, we're, let me hit the, a couple that I think might require some board discussion. And then if Tim has specific questions, he can ask. Let me fast forward here then to, there's, there appears to be an encroachment along the easterly property line. Where there's like an existing gravel parking area that extends off property to the property to. That's also within the wetland buffer area, very close to a D C wetland. So we'd like to see that restored, and that buffer restored.
All right, if I may address this, and then maybe Tom can give you some more details. This is a case where good neighbors don't need fences. And Tom and his easterly neighbor get along famously. And the neighbor doesn't want, and hasn't asked us to, to resolve the encroachment or restore the buffer. So, and it's not our property, so we can't really commit for him. So we would appreciate the board's comments on how best to deal with this issue.
And I, just before you discuss it, to me, it's more, more than like the simple issue between the two neighbors. It's the fact that we have a, you know, an improvement in a D C buffer that we normally wouldn't have, because it's along a property line and extends into a property line. So it's, it's something that typically wouldn't be there, shouldn't be.
But we're not showing on our site plan any parking or other storage uses out off, off property, off premises.
I know, it's very clear, it's cleverly not shown on your plan, but when you go in the field, it's very clearly used.
Oh yeah, no question, we don't deny that it's, it has been used in the past with the neighbor's full knowledge and consent. And we do a little snow plowing for him, so everybody's happy and gets along.
My problem is that it's in the wetland buff, and it's in the D C wetland.
So I, I guess this becomes a separate issue from this process. And, and we'll, we'll have to talk to the neighbor and, and you and the building inspector about what to do.
To the extent that the majority of the developed portion of the sites in the wetland buffer, we have a mitigation plan that addresses that for onsite. Can we include in our wetland mitigation, anything that's going on on the adjacent property to the east? Now, we really don't want to lose that area. So if, you know, you and Beth can discuss a possible way to mitigate that encroachment into the buffer, that would allow us to continue to use that portion of the property.
I'll let Judd speak to the legal issues.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and our, our concern is that this is something that is from a practical and a real world perspective, being utilized to support the operation. And while not shown on the site plan, it's tied to the operation, it's tied to the business use. And we have a, an encroachment, or we have a buffer disturbance. So my suggestion is, I mean, I don't know if we're going to be able to address this tonight, but perhaps Tim, Michael, and Jan and I can set, side of time on a Thursday. During Jan's office hours, we can, we can talk this out.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, thank you for that, because I do think it is, it is more than just two neighbors disagreeing. I think the wetland buffer is what brings the, the planning board concerns to a head. But we are also approving the site plan. So, you know, we, it should reflect what the site, how the site is used. So thank you, I think a, a meeting to discuss that would be helpful.
The only other one that I think may, from my perspective, some comment is the lighting. There is, I guess, existing lighting at the site, we had asked for a lighting plan. And I think we had discussed that historically, you know, in the evening times, the landscape nursery is generally closed for during the holiday season. Where there's some Christmas trees and they, they put up some temporary lighting. And I think that's fine, but now we have a, a use that's going to be there more permanently, obviously going to have evening hours. I mean, I think that the parking lot needs to be appropriately lit for safety reasons. So they, they do have this lighting plan, it doesn't show any illuminance levels. Basically, a photo representation of the lights that are there and where they are on the property, which is helpful. But doesn't help us in terms of demonstrating compliance with code and dealing with potential issues. The, the lighting fixtures are all floodlights, you know, angled floodlights mounted either to the building or on poles. Which I think is kind of inconsistent with the, with the lighting code requires in, in the town. So that one, you know, typically, we would like to see downward lit, full coat off, light sky compliant lights. And because this use is going to be more than just seasonal, I think it's appropriate.
That F period, C period reference, that's foot candles?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think we have a couple of things that are before us. One is the building inspector's letter that came before said he did want to see architectural plans. And we've just got the lighting comment too, that the building inspector might want to look at. So I, I think we're looking for consensus to refer this, this new set of plans to the building inspector. So I'd look for the board to agree to that.
Yes.
Yes, Jerome.
Just one further comment regarding the seating capacity. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, seating capacity, in looking at the business plan, it does indicate twenty-five seats. So we have, we have six, thirty, and then or twenty and twenty-five. So that, that's got to be all in agreement as we go forward.
Okay. Maureen, did you, were you saying aye, or did you have a comment?
I was saying aye.
Okay, so I think we have consensus to send this to the building inspector. We also have a resolution where we will take, be designated lead agency that Jan has prepared and circulated. So I'd look for a motion to say that we should accept this resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Rich, second?
Second.
Jerome, okay, any further discussion on this resolution? Okay, then I'm going to poll the board, Maureen?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And I also say yes, so we will, so the motion carries and we are, and we will sign that resolution. I guess, I mean, there are a number of open items, but we've heard that the applicant wants to plan, or plans to meet with Jan to have that discussion. So I'm wondering if we feel it is appropriate to move to a public hearing on this? I'm hearing a lot of interference, I don't know if that's me or. So do we feel that this would be, is it ready to go to a public hearing, or do we want to see one more time through?
Well, if I might, if you set it up for a public hearing for December, because the deadline for these November meetings in, in five days. If you set it up for a public hearing in December, that gives us five or six weeks, or you know, whatever the timeframe is to meet with Jan and resolve the issues. Which, and I'd like to think we can do it in that timeframe.
Sounds reasonable.
Sounds reasonable, yeah.
Okay, um, do we need to?
This too, is just that if, if the board is in agreement that you want to set it for December, you just, you don't need a formal motion to set that. Just the consensus and, and it will be dependent on the applicant working with Kirsten to prepare the public. The hearing notices and, and hopefully we get everything in by that deadline and we'll be ready to go.
Okay, and unfortunately, I don't have in front of me when the December meeting is.
Fifteenth.
Thank you, December fifteenth, thank you.
And what's our filing deadline, Kirsten?
November tenth.
No, twenty-fourth.
No.
Before.
November twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, sorry.
Right.
Yeah, it's an ongoing submission.
And should I work with Michael or Tim on the public hearing notices, addresses?
Michael.
That's what Tim said, okay. So anything else on this? I think we're, we're moving forward.
Yeah, thank you, I know this was time consuming, but we appreciate it, we made a lot of progress.
Exactly, I'm going to be making some calls to Jan straight away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is calendar number oh-five dash twenty P B. This is a, an application for, by Aenezia for a lot line change on two forty-nine Kichwan Road, two thirty-seven Kichwan Road. And, and a number of, and a no number lot on Kichwan Road. An application for a lot line change. And I am, we do have a couple of people, I think, here for that. So perhaps?
Good evening, Chair Anderson, Tim Cronin. We, we put together the plans for Michael Vanessa, who's on the screen right now, for a lot line adjustment. Recently, he purchased the property that is, actually has the house right on the road.
Two forty-nine.
Two forty, yeah, thank you, two forty-one. And he also owns the adjacent properties to the west. And what, what Michael wants to do is to preserve, I guess, the open space and the privacy and so on. And even though the, the property at two forty-one is encumbered by wetlands and steep slopes and it's, you know, its development potential is somewhat limited. Michael still felt it would be safer and better and more, a more conservative way to preserve the property if he executed the lot line adjustment. And that's exactly what we did. The property that is being taken away from two forty-one will be deeded into the adjacent property. So the Vanessa total parcel will be approximately.
Sixteen acres.
Sixteen acres, what is it? Looks like you're going from, you're going to, you're going to lose about three acres, so you're going to get five acres more. You're going to be roughly five acres larger than what you have now, so. And, you know, we submitted the plans to Jan, and there's a few comments he has, he wants us to adjust some of the things on the flat. And the one question that he had, which I think, Jan, this is your major point, was the, the twenty-five foot strip, which provides another means of frontage on Kichwan Road. And, you know, what, what I, I think is going on there, and, you know, we know that that, that neck or that flagpole, if you will, if you will, is, is encumbered between wetlands, wetlands buffer. I think the entire thing is in a wetlands buffer. We know it's, again, its development potential is limited. But I think for future, and future could be 20, 30, 40 years from now, if the Menezias decide that they would like to deed some of this land to a land trust or open space, it does provide another means of access to the property short of going up their driveway. But I think, you know, we, we know that it's not going to be developed for a driveway, but for a walking trail to get into this open space, we thought it would be a good idea to keep that additional access to the open space property that's there.
I mean, I, I will say that was my major, when I looked at it, I, I was concerned with that, that flag, flagpole, whatever it is, that's, that's the, the short area that's in a, an additional access point, it looks like. Because it really does go through the wetland and it doesn't look like it, it, it doesn't look like it could be productively used. Now, for a walking trail, perhaps that's different, but it's, it's, it would be tempting to a new owner, I would think, to say, oh, I would want to, you know, if, if, if the property transferred, that they would want to have access that way. And I don't want to give someone a sense that they might be entitled to something that would be very difficult to, to see through.
Be impossible. Well, I mean, it's, this, this piece of property is leaving the 241 is going to be deeded to, or combined with the existing house. So there's no need to put a second driveway because we already have the driveway to the main house coming off Kitchwan. So...
Yeah, but if they, if they decided to subdivide it and to get, replicate what's there, you know, today, they have, they have the frontage they need to resubdivide.
But Jan, it's steep slopes and wetlands. It's buffer. There's, I don't think there's a piece of property there that you could develop. Years from now, when they have, 100 years from now, if you have sewer in the area, maybe, but right now, I mean...
Why don't you eliminate the flag and put an easement there or a walking trail?
Well, we, we could do the same thing with the driveway if you did, if, if, if that was the setup as well. You're not really deserving anything.
No, you would have no frontage. But you wouldn't be able to ever...
Well, I mean, you know, Mike Vinesi, if you, you want to chime in, but it just seems like it's, it's, it gives us the opportunity to do something in the future, whether it's a walking trail. I can't see a driveway. And certainly, you know, knowing the town of Lewisboro, things 200 years from now may be something, but right now, possible.
And our, our, my thought process on that, just so you know, is we can't in any way access that other half of the property from our property. If, for whatever reason, we may need back there, I don't have any that I can think of. But going through this process, just seeing digging a, having to dig three septic wells randomly on the properties, you know, the guy getting back there with the digger, we can't because there's a pond and a stream separating those, that side. So it was just a way, a way to have some ability to access it by more than...
Tim, do you have to bring up the drawing? If not, I could put it up, so.
Okay.
In text.
And I just, I want to say one thing. I think you keep saying 241. It is, I believe it's 249. Right.
Sorry. I'm going to try.
I might be able to.
No, uh, no. That's not it.
I have it in front of me if you want me to put it up.
Yeah, if you could, I'd appreciate that.
I think the other thing that, that seemed important, perhaps while Jan is doing this, is that the, I think there's a, you have to prove that there's the new site, or sorry, this new smaller lot is, is compliant.
Yes, that, that was one of Jan's comments. We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that and take care of that.
Okay.
If we need to adjust the, the property line to accommodate that, then, you know, there, you can certainly do that because the lot that's getting the land is, is big enough as it is. So if we have to take it away, we're fine.
Okay.
Can you see the?
Yes.
Your screen sharing is paused.
It's working.
So this is the, the flag. Providing frontage for this potential lot. Through the well.
Assuming that these, you have these shaded, these areas extend.
Extend. Tim?
Yeah, I, I broke up a little bit, Jan. Would you say?
The wetland areas that are shown on this lot here extend over this flag and onto the other property, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
And in the back of the property is, is wetlands.
Yeah, got a lot of them. I, I, I mean, again, I don't want to, it just seems like it's too tempting for a future, if, if the property ever sells and some future owner, when you talk about, you know, 50 years, 100 years from now, it, it seems like it's too tempting for somebody to try to subdivide something, which is, you know, not going to, not going to be able to be used in the way that it looks like it could be used in this way. I, I like the idea of a easement in, or, or something, but I'm, I'm concerned about formalizing a, a flag lot with the, with the frontage like this. But I'll, I'll, I'd like to hear what other people's on the board feel as well.
Yeah, well, it, it also looks like this easement, which creates the flag light, would be crossing through wetlands.
Yes.
And, you know, which would be an exceptional condition. To put a roadway through that, in my, what I'm seeing is half where the blue areas, they continue across that easement.
That's, that's correct.
But why aren't they shown on this drawing? I mean, it looks like it's truncated.
Well, it, it is, and, and we can adjust that to the later plan. What we did is we kept the colors on 49, on, on the, on what will be the remaining portion of 249. But we can actually add the additional color since we have a property line demarcated. We can add those colors in those wetlands actually onto the 249. It's going to be deeded to 237, and you can actually see how encumbered that rear portion of, of 237 or the eastern side of 237 is. 237 is the existing house that has the pond there.
Could you use my likeness here and just describe again why this, why this subdivision is occurring? What's the, the reasoning behind it?
Well, originally, we purchased the house from the town at auction approximately two years ago. It was, it was foreclosed on for back taxes. We didn't want anyone building behind it. We had heard someone say they could build, potentially build. So we went to the auction to sort of protect it from a builder. We ended up winning it, and we just want to preserve it for the future and add it to our land. We, you know, my, my parents have owned, he's on the, on the call, so he's owned the other two lots since 1983 or 84. So, you know, we were just looking not to have a house built, which after doing all of this, realized there's no way for a builder to go do that, it seems. But we didn't want a house built staring at ours because it's a hill going up to the, after, on the side of the other side of the pond. So we didn't want a big bright house built where we can stare at them, was what we were trying to prevent. So we did purchase house. We have, we completely renovated it, and we're in the process of selling it to a local in town.
So I think, again, my, my sense is having that flag makes it far more likely that someone will try to get to that property at some point. I, I, I just, I, I understand what you're trying to do, but I, I think it, I think it may cause future, future mischief. That's, I, I don't know. I am, but that, that isn't a reason, I don't think that's a reason that we can really say no to this, just that it's, it's, seems like it is something that will only cause future difficulty.
Well, the only way somebody could subdivide that piece of property, once it's combined with 237, is if they can demonstrate they have a buildable area on what would then be subdivided off of 237, which means septic system, house location, driveway, which, you know, I, I don't think you can do it. I mean, you're going through the wetland, coming into the driveway. Everything's going to be with inside a wetland buffer in the back portion of the lot. You still need to deal with the health department for septic. It's, it's, you know, the, the driveway through that neck would be amongst the many, many issues that they would have to overcome before a subdivision was approved.
Right.
If you look at the plan there that Jan's showing, and, and we'll show it on the, on the next submission, all those little numbers on, on 237 are all marking out the wetland boundary. So you can see there's wetlands throughout that entire back piece.
Right. Okay, well, I mean, maybe I'm, I'm worrying about something that...
Good. If you kept the flag, you could, you could restrict the, the flag on the plat to, to prevent its use as a driveway. You know, you could say, you know, no, not for vehicular access or, or something like that. So it keeps the flag for frontage purposes, allows the applicant, I guess, to walk it, maybe a trail, but would kind of take off the future ability. Maybe that's a compliment.
That coupled potentially, Jan, with a, you know, not only a, a, a flat notation, but some sort of deed restriction.
Yeah. Otherwise, I think you're leaving the floor open for, for the potential for the, the planning board to need to have to make a tough decision in the future as to whether there should be an access way through that flag. And I, I think that should just be resolved now.
Yeah, and to avoid a future argument by somebody that, you know, it, you, you can't deny the permit because I need this for purposes of access and use of the property.
Right. I mean, it looks, it, it just looks like we're creating mischief in the future. So I would love to find a way to, to make it clear that it's not meant to be, you know, frontage for development. It's not meant to be for whatever vehicular access for, something like that would make me more comfortable with it. It, it then, you know, I guess I'm still kind of curious why it needs to be there, but, but if it had, was properly limited in its use, I would, I, I would feel more comfortable than I do now.
Can I ask a question? Just because I don't know, know, and I'm curious. If I cut it off and just put a right of use easement on it? Like, put the, I can't point because I don't have the pointer. Get rid, don't have it at all. Cut the line off, you know, right there. Just cut it right there. Leave that piece with the other property?
Yeah.
And just put a rights of use easement so I can get back there if I need to? Oh, again, my, my whole thing, I, I, this, we were, you know, to do this, I had to dig septic holes. And for the guy to do the septic hole at 249, he had to like drive his, his little thing around all the way to the back and cut, and my thought was if I ever had a reason, I don't know what reason it would be, but if I needed to be back there with tobacco or whatever, I have no way of getting there because of the pond and the river and the stream. So when I was doing it, I was like, I, I thought I could do it either way. I could do it with a, with a rights or an access, I don't know the legal term. So I, I don't want to imply that I do, but some sort of, because I can, I own both, I own both properties. I can just easement to me where I have access or something like that. That's another option. I'm asking if that's a plausible.
Mike, I, I think that takes into, takes, takes care of Chairwoman Anderson's concern. Essentially, that flag then becomes part of the existing 2, 240. And he gives himself a 15 or 20 foot easement to get to the back, an access easement.
I would try to avoid the wetlands with the access easement. There's no need to, to show access for the use of, you know, equipment or whatever running through the middle of a wetland. It's just, it's not appropriate.
Exactly.
So we could sort of snake it through however, whatever makes the most sense?
Yep.
Oh, but I tell you, if you look at the edge of the blue and you see how steep that green is, you know, you're going from a flat wetland to a steep slope. So there's, there's no, there's no eureka solution here. Well, we, I mean, we can talk to Jan about that and come up with what seems to be the most reasonable way to do it.
I, I think that would be, I, I think that would be very helpful. I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, future mischief here, and, and I think that, that helps. I, I also, I think the, there were a couple other comments in the, in the memo, but I think they could be, they're more easily to address. I'm seeing what you're doing here.
Janet, if I may, just while Tim's on here and I have the plan up, the real threshold comment was zoning comment about buildable area. And because we only, we're only looking at zoning and buildable area on the lot that's getting smaller. Because obviously if there's a zoning noncom, nonconformity on the larger lot, it's only going to be lessened by the fact that it's getting so much larger. So Tim, rightfully so, just evaluated the smaller lot. And the buildable area, just to remind you, is, is land that is less than 15% small, is not wetland. And the code requires in zone 40,000 square feet of contiguous buildable area. We can't have a little patch here and a little patch there. It's all got to be connected. And it can't narrow down to less than 50 feet. So I think you're getting pretty close here. So you just, you go through, you just illustrate the areas of the buildable area, making sure that it doesn't narrow down at any point to less than 50 feet, that you have the 40,000 square feet.
I will take a look at that for sure.
And my, my point is, ultimately, that call is going to be made by the building department, by the building inspector. So, you know, before we defer or before there's a, a consensus referral to the building inspector, maybe, you know, Jan and Tim should examine this a little more closely, just to avoid going once and then going back again to Joe, that is.
Right.
Right.
That's fine. What we can do, Jan, when you're up in town on one of these Thursdays, we can maybe take a little trip out there and take a look at it.
Okay, are there any other comments on this at, at the time? I think the, the plan is really to, as I understand it, to first of all, look at the bill, contiguous buildable area and, and make sure that that is compliant. And then to reexamine a different way to have the desired access without ending up with a flag lot that could cause, could cause difficulty in the future.
Well, I, you know, I want to say here that we've taken a lot of time circumnavigating what seems to me to be a crazy rationale to subdivide and create a, a, subdivide and create an unbuildable lot in the wetlands and have a, a road to it or an accessible way to it. I mean, it, it goes against all our principles, and that should be just confusing to me. Just confusing to me why we've gone this far and spent this much time on something that's, uh, resolvable in, as the applicant has indicated, in a, in a much more rational way. But anyway, that's just my feeling about it. It's my time also.
Yeah. Um, and I think, I think that's our, you've, you've articulated very clearly our concern on this. Um, I do see that someone has raised their hand, but we are, we are not currently having a public comment. Um, so I'm not quite sure why that hand is up. Um, does anyone know if Carol Cernak is a neighbor or someone here who? Okay, I'm.
Hi, this is Carol Cernak. I'm at Seventy Spring Street South in South Salem, New York at Farview Farm. Um, I would just like to speak, I don't have anything specifically to say about this issue, but more generalized to speak about the town's, um, principles regarding wetlands violations. The issue that's going over on that salt dome property is, is violating a deed restriction. It's violating, um, town code for waste management transfer. It's a wetland violation as the, the property sits in a ten acre wetland zone. Um, and there's a road running through the wetlands. So I would like, uh, you know, everybody to be aware, be careful who, who you deal with the devil, because the devil's not always in the details.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. I'm not, um, uh, you know, we are, we are trying to be careful with, um, wetlands, as you know, so, um, I'm not, I'm not really aware of, of that, that issue. Um, okay.
Thank you for your time, but I will make you aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. So if there's, I'm sorry, uh, if there's, I think we're done with, um, Vanessa, Venesia, I'm sorry, I didn't say that right.
That's quite all right.
And, um, we have a path, we have sort of some direction on where we're going there, right? So, so we will move on, um.
Jan, Jan, one quick question. Assuming, you know, well, I'll meet with, with Jan, we'll discuss the modifications made to the site plan and address the buildable area issue. Uh, for this to be approved by the planning board, will it require a public hearing?
I can address that.
Thank you.
It gets in mind.
That was one of the questions, is the procedure that the planning board. There's, there is a provision in the subdivision regulations that allows, uh, in the, uh, in the instance, the lot line changes for the, for the board to modify the normal process, proceed directly to final approval and, and waive a public hearing. But you, you need to, you need to demonstrate a number of things, including the fact that you're not creating any nonconformities. Okay. All right. And that's also, and that, that, and the decision to do that is also, you know, a discretion called by the planning board. Yeah, all right. So let's set, we'll submit the next plan and hopefully it's good enough that the board can waive it. If not, then we have the public hearing.
Okay. Any, any other comments? I mean, Jerome, thank you again for your, your views on this flag. Um, and if there are no others, seeing no hands waving, I will move to the next item on the agenda. Um, the next thing on the agenda that was published was the Eskelton residence. Um, and they have a, asked for it to be adjourned because of a medical issue in the family. So I believe we should plan to put that on the November agenda. If no one has a concern with that. And then we will move on to calendar number fifty seven dash twenty WP and calendar number nine dash twenty SW. This is the Schwartz residence, um, at sixty six Twin Lakes Road in South Salem, New York. It's an application for the construction of a one bedroom house and studio. And I'm hearing a lot of interference, so I'm not sure if there's, I'm looking to see if everybody looks muted. Um, Alan, we're gonna, um, okay. Um, so is there a representative, um, to speak to this, speak to us, uh, on, on this?
Yes, Alan Pilch.
Hi, Alan.
Let me unvideo myself or whatever it's called. There I am. Would you like me to put up, uh, something, share a screen?
Sure. If you would, I think that's the easiest way to talk about what the proposal is.
I lose something here?
It's, it's hard for you to see us now, but we can see this.
Okay. So you can see the, uh, screen?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Um, so good evening, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Alan Pilch and I'm representing, uh, Michael Schwartz uh, in his, uh, application for, um, development of this single lot. So this application, this is the, the lot in question. This is actually the current lot where Mr. Schwartz, uh, lives. Um, so this application is made for the site development plan approval for a one bedroom house called Studio Space on this property located at sixty eight Twin Lakes Road. Um, the property is about twenty five thousand square feet in size. And it's mainly wooded, this lot. Uh, there are several large outcrops, um, which you can sort of see, they sort of shaded areas here. Let me increase the, maybe that help. Those little shaded areas are rock outcrops, mainly in the southern portion of the property. Twin Lakes Road being to the north on the right, and there's Lake Oskalita here on the left. Um, the, uh, the only regulator wetland on or adjacent to the property then is Lake Oskalita and the hundred fifty foot buffer extends to about, about sixty percent of the property. So let me also then go to the plan here. Can you see that now? The plan for the property?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so it's proposed to construct a new one bedroom, single family house called Artist Studio Building on the property. Uh, the one bedroom house has a footprint of only about a thousand fifty nine square feet. It's located about a hundred and twenty seven feet actually from the edge of the lake. Um, there'll be no basement to this, um, house. So there will be, um, very, you know, there, there will not be any sort of extensive excavation to construct it. Um, and I'll say the applicant, um, um, Michael Schwartz has been very adamant that they want to retain as many trees as possible on this lot. So the intent in planning this has been to minimize disturbance, um, on the lot. Um, we are planning a new nine foot wide gravel, um, surface driveway, which would connect to Twin Lakes Road. Um, the, they'll say the driveway and the parking area, this, uh, single space would be located outside the, the wetland buffer line, which is actually here. So you can see that portion of the house is in the hundred fifty foot buffer, but a portion of it lies outside. Um, there's a proposal to do a septic system between the house and Twin Lakes Road. Um, and, uh, what we're showing here is the primary and expansion area. Actually, we're going to be doing testing on the, uh, to be witnessed by the health department this Friday, and, and also New York City D P is Friday. So we're doing deep poles and percolation testing. Um, the disturbance area for the new house is calculated to be about nine thousand square feet. It's a total area of disturbance. Um, and which includes the, um, hundred percent septic system expansion area. Then the hundred fifty foot buffer area of disturbance is about thirty six hundred square feet. Um, we are proposing, I'll call it a rain garden, or you know, here it's labeled as a stormwater management area to pick up the roof of the proposed house. Um, and the reason why it's located here is to make sure that we have the minimum separations that are required, uh, from existing septic system. There's an existing septic system in the front yard of number sixty six. Uh, this proposed septic system being located here for this lot. And I believe the septic system for number seventy is located here. So that really leaves, um, I'll call it an area where the, um, rain garden is actually proposed on this lot. Um, and as we noted too, uh, the principal use of this structural be as, as an artist's studio. Um, Mr. Schwartz's companion Claudia Aronow is an accomplished painter. She's also a photographer. Um, and, uh, sort of in response to some of the questions that were raised, to the extent that it may be used to process film, she will not put into the septic system any substance that would impair its functioning. You know, they've lived on this, like, about forty years and they care very much for it. Um, and I'll just say there are very well established ways of, you know, segregating and separately disposing of any substance that won't go down to the lake, it won't go down to the septic system. And also just say, there's no intention of using this structure for commercial purposes. It'll be used solely for her own private artistic activity. Maybe what I could just show is some of the renderings of the, the house. Let's propose, that's like from the south, um, from the lake, looking at it. Um, it's another view from the kind of like the southeast. It's a small structure. It's only like a thousand, you know, I said a thousand fifty nine square feet. That's another view of it from the southwest from the lake. And finally, kind of like a, a rendering of the house from the northeast. That's from essentially what it would look like from the street. So mainly the windows are really from the, um, you know, the views to the lake. Let me, um, let me see if I can figure out how to deal with this now.
What do you, what do you want to do?
I know, I know. I'll stop share. And so that's essentially what's being proposed, um, here. But also with me, by the way, Darren Mercer, the architect is here. And, uh, I know that, um, I think Michael's iPhone is Michael Schwartz is also listening.
Yeah, okay. Um, so, um, let's see what we have. I, I did have a couple of questions about this when I saw it. Um, so you have answered the, the question about the darkroom and the potential, um, chemicals. Um, that was one. I do have, um, I sort of can't believe that somebody would have this beautiful site and not have some deck outside, some seating outside. Um, and so I would, I would guess I would ask if that's ever going to be a, uh, element, maybe it should be added now. Um, similarly, steps down to the lake or access down to the lake. It just seems like there will, that will be something that someone will want at some point. So, um, I mean, if you say no, no, but I'm, it just seems, it seems, um, odd that it's not there. Um, and I guess the other thing I would look at is, um, the water line that comes in is, would be disturbance that's on, on the opposite side of the lot from, uh, driveway. And I don't know if that's because of a separation distance or what, but, um, could it be, one of my questions would be whether there would be a way to um, maybe reduce the amount of, of disturbance by not having to dig a separate line, but it might be that there's a need for separation from the septic. I'm not sure.
No, it's in the driveway, Janet. You're, you're not reading it right.
I'm not reading it right.
No, the water line is in the proposed driveway.
Actually, the do you want me to share a screen again?
Okay, sure.
Let me do that and share. Um, the water line is shown connecting to the existing, um, utility of the Twin Lakes, uh, Water Corp. And what it does is it comes into the, I'll call it the northeastern corner of the property. Uh, there is a required separation of ten feet from the septic system. And it, it's not shown here in the existing driveway because it's, it's just a little too tight with the septic system being here.
Not on the plan I have though, Alan. I've got a plan that shows it right in the driveway.
Okay, that, that, that was not the submitted plan. I think maybe you're looking at an earlier rendition. This was the one I think you might be looking at the old draft. But I know this is the one that was submitted, which actually showed it here, because this is the, um, um, where, where it was proposed.
Yeah. This one is dated September tenth.
Okay, that's early.
Okay.
Um, the one that we have here was the one that was submitted was dated September twenty eighth. So I'm not quite sure which, you know, that might've been a very early rendition of the plan. Remember, this is just a, it's a, it's a narrow trench that gets installed, but there's a requirement for ten foot separation. Part of it too is just to, in, in the route it takes is to avoid trees.
Yeah.
Um, so that's really the, you know, it's, it's trenching a location to put a water line. You know, it's a copper water line. It's, you know, it's probably going to be like inch and a half. It's pretty typical. And then it's covered.
Yep. No, I just, I, I didn't, just was thinking disturbance, but if it, if it's necessary for a separation, then that
Okay.
is how it is.
Alan, did you say that driveway was existing?
No, it is not. There is an existing gravel driveway to number sixty six. But we do think we should have a, at least a separate driveway in for number sixty eight.
Would you consider, uh, a common driveway, just a spur over to the cottage? And then if the lot were to be sold to a, another party, you'd have, uh, the ability to install the separate driveway then? Um, showing is that the code requires, uh, two parking spaces for the house.
I understand that.
And you have to turn them around. So I think that's going to end up getting a little bit bigger than it's shown.
Yeah, we were hoping to be able to review that. I know that the concern of course is, you know, amount of disturbance. Uh, that's a concern of the, uh, you know, Michael Schwartz, the applicant. And, uh, I know he just wanted to keep the impacts to trees and everything else minimized. So that's why it was shown that way. I understand the fact that there's, you know, a requirement for two. It's something we can discuss as to whether or not it could be shared at some point, then split off.
Yeah, if you had a spur that, yeah, and I like, I think that's a good idea. If you had a spur off the other thing, you could just do a, um.
The two parking spaces, just enough width for two parking spaces. They back up onto the other property and they take off. And if you ever, uh, go to sell the lot, then you put in its separate driveway at that point, you know?
Right. Well, it's something we can certainly discuss with them.
Yeah. From a zoning standpoint, it has to be looked at as a single family house instead of a cottage. Has to be standalone.
Right. And it is proposed as a single family house. Understood.
Yeah.
And we'll address your comment regarding deck or steps down the lake. I mean, I, I know presently there is, you know, there, they have existing steps which crosses over the property line here.
Right.
Which goes down to the dock. So I mean, theory, somebody could, if they have some agreement, obviously we'll have that some type of, because there, this is not proposed to merge these two lots, you know, into one or two separate lots. So, um, uh, you know, I suppose with some type of easement or something would be required.
Yeah, I mean, I just see it as, with all the world, you know, of Airbnbs and everything else, it's really hard to imagine that this will not have somebody there who wants have somebody there who wants to get, who wants to A, sit outside and B, um, access the lake. So there's, you know, it'd be nice to design it in. And then I think we saw a comment from, um, a letter that I hope you got that came from um, Three Lakes Council, and they said something about the concern about the outflow or the outlet of this stormwater facility, whether it's a rain garden. I'm not sure of what, where would that go?
Well, the rain garden would be located in this area. I know the soil will have to be tested here. Um, in accordance with the comments from colored sessions. Um, if there is an outflow, it would be to this location. I mean, somewhere on this side of the south side of it. Um, it will be dispersed probably through some type of level spreader. There is one. I mean, no matter what, the runoff gets to the lake, Lake Oskalita somehow.
Yeah.
So it's really a matter of, um, it's a fairly woodsy area here as well. So it's just a matter of dispersing it and making sure that um, it is controlled. Um, I understand their concern that there is a drop. There is a drop in elevation between here and there. That is correct. Um, it's also, um, but it's also fairly woodsy. So it's just a matter of being able to control the runoff as it, um, I know, from whatever excess there is, that doesn't seep into the ground within the rain garden. Because the rain garden will be designed to control up to the one year storm.
Okay. Jerome.
It appears to me there's a staircase blocked. And that could be considered an additional bedroom and it's building inspector's decision on that, whether he opts to have the building, the health department opine on that. But it's not being shown or indicated. As a matter of fact, the staircase isn't even being called out. Uh, am I reading it wrong or am I?
I think there's a staircase on the front of the kitchen and then one of the later plans. So if you're looking at the first submission, the later plan had a outline, it's sort of looked like an office upstairs that had, I guess, maybe BS. I don't know whether that means some bulkhead storage or something, um.
BS usually means something else.
Yeah, I know.
I'm concerned about that. It doesn't seem to be any indication of this loft and that additional square footage, which could be used for additional sleeping. Again, it's, it's not our issue. It's, but I think you gotta be straight uh, with the building inspector on this, obviously.
Right. And, and the plans, as I say, have been submitted to the, um, health department as well, which will review it. And we
But does it show the loft?
Pardon me?
Does it show the loft and the staircase?
Yes.
Okay.
But certainly, we can discuss that with the building inspector.
Yeah. So I think we should probably refer this, well, I think we should refer this to the building inspector. I think, um, he's probably going to have some of the same uh, concerns that Yan pointed out about the, um, about the parking, but it certainly helps to also have him look at the bedroom count. The so I need, I think, consensus of the board to say that we will refer this to the building inspector.
Hey Janet, I have a, a couple of comments.
Sure.
Um, so trees notwithstanding, can this house be moved back towards the road and still have the separation that's required for the septic?
I think in this instance, it would be very tight to do that. We are showing the twenty foot offset, which is the requirement. That's a twenty foot offset here.
Uh huh.
And that's actually the expansion area there. And this is the primary area. So it really is fairly tight in here in order to slide this building over. And I think also there's this large oak tree here, which we're trying to preserve.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's some
But you've got two thirds of the house in the wetland buffer, if I'm reading this correctly.
That is correct.
Okay. And you could, you could essentially turn the house. I know architecturally, that may not be what you're looking for, but if we're trying to, uh, if we're concerned about the proximity to, uh, the lake and the fact that quite a bit of the house is in the wetland buffer, isn't the applicant, and someone help me out here, isn't the applicant required to show all of the different configurations that would take the house or the structure out or minimize the impact to the wetland buffer?
The, the board could certainly ask for alternatives and, um, could certainly ask for alternatives that would reduce impacts to the, to the wetland buffer. Absolutely.
Yeah. I, I think that this is, um, a, a beautiful rendition, and I could see why you would want it right there. But I don't know if, uh, that is the best place uh, given its proximity to the lake. So I would like to see some other options.
Okay.
Yeah, I wonder if you could move the expansion area further to the, I guess that becomes the east and maybe shove the house up and have the expansion area, you know, sort of where the, where the house spots out there, which would of course be, um, then you'd have to move the, the water line somewhere else. But, um, again, that it might be good to bring that out. Okay.
I think what we'll do is we'll look at some orientation of the house that would, um, I'll say reduce the proximity of it to the lake. Um, I, I really don't believe it's, it's a very, you know, I really don't believe it's feasible to move the house say to the north towards Twin Lakes Road to any extent. I think we moved about as far as we could, but perhaps what we could do, uh, as I said, the house is about a hundred twenty-seven feet from the edge of the lake. We could look to see if we could, um, orient in such a way to increase that distance.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Alan, are you showing a one bedroom septic system or two bedrooms?
It is actually for a one bedroom. That is correct. And I did speak with the, um, health department, that whether they would entertain that. They said absolutely. But they said the minimum is a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty linear feet of trench, which is what is shown on this plan.
Is there any ability to reorient the, uh, the septic field so they're more parallel to the property line and, and kind of swing the, the system closer to Twin Lakes Road?
Um, the way it's set right now, there, there really follows the grade as best as possible with just a slight, you know, it actually drops off a little bit in this direction from the, I call it from west to east. And this really tries to orient it with the contour and have just a slight drop across it. Um, and it would place it, you know, closer to a lot of these large trees, which are very good condition and sort of provide screening and and filtering, if you will, the property in for Twin Lakes Road. So, and this is kind of an open area, which is why most of the primary is here. Um, so that was really the attempt to locate a septic system there. I think trying to, you know, rotate it a little bit might be possible, but I don't know that we can gain too much here.
And that's a septic system for one bedroom?
That is correct. We'll take a look at that.
Okay, um, any, any other comments? Thank you, Maureen. That was Okay, um, so again, to sort of move along, I think we need to, um, refer this to the building inspector. I think there is a, um, the upstairs drawing does show a loft with someone standing in it. Um, and, and, uh, whether that would be, I, I don't believe there's a, um, I think there's a shelf or a, um, a desk sort of area, but it doesn't look like there's a full wall. So whether that might not be considered a, a bedroom up there. Um, so can I have consensus of the board that we send this to the building inspector?
Aye.
Yeah. Okay, good. Everyone said yes. Um, I think the other thing is, um, I think there's a need for wetland mitigation that we have not seen. Um, there is stormwater, of course, going on, but, um, I think there's an opportunity for, for, um, mitigation and there's a need for mitigation for the, the wetland disturbance. So wetland buffer disturbance.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
That will be provided.
Good.
And I know there are a lot of comments from, uh, colored sessions that we will be responding to all of them. As well as the comments we received here this evening.
Okay, um, Yan, uh, sorry, John, did you have a different, was there a CAC comment on this that we have not addressed? You're muted.
No, uh, we were just looking for, in particular, the wetland mitigation plan. And when I saw the comments from, uh, the Tri Lakes Council about the, uh, the darkroom, I, that's been addressed because having once had a darkroom myself, I know that you don't want to put that stuff in, in the ground.
Yeah, and it uses a ton of water. So, you know, having a lot, having a possibly oversized, um, septic system is not, not a concern here. Um, okay, anything else that we need to, uh, discuss before we let you go? Okay, um, thank you very much, Alan, and we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it with these comments.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see you soon.
Good. Um, the next item on the agenda is a wetland violation. Calendar number oh one dash twenty WV and calendar number twelve dash twenty WP, the Valencia residence at eleven ninety-six Route thirty-five, South Salem, New York. Um, and I believe we have now a wetland application, wetland permit application. Um, so what happens next?
We did receive the wetland permit application. escrow's been established. The applicant submitted a, I believe it was a survey, uh, with the wetland delineation, um, which I believe was prepared by Mary Janik. I did receive a call, um, uh, representative or, or design professional, and I owe him a phone call. We're going to go over, need to be done on, on the, on the mitigation. So that's something that I, I have to do if, uh, if Mr. Valencia could have him give me a ring. That'd be, that'd be fine. We could set up a meeting or a Zoom and go over that that plan.
Okay.
There's a couple of blank spaces in the permit uh, in regard to, uh, the watershed, D E P watershed, is it, or isn't it in the watershed? I assume it is.
It is.
But that, that's not checked. And then the total area disturbance is not indicated either.
Yeah, I'm not sure that they, they would know the disturbance area yet, just because we haven't gotten the plan, uh, prepared. So I, I can go over all that with them. We didn't review the submission just because it was the, the survey and application form.
Okay.
When we meet, uh, we'll go over all of that.
Okay.
All right, so, um, should we adjourn this to, uh, our November meeting then?
What's the submission deadline for November?
The twenty-seventh.
I'd suggest that this number meeting.
Yeah, I, I, Jen, my suggestion would be the December meeting.
Terrific.
And I would also suggest that, um, just for agenda purposes, that if we have a public hearing that night, that we put this at the beginning of the agenda rather than the end.
Okay.
Yeah, because it'll be a, it'll be a, a control appearance and, and a, and a status check. And I, I think it would just be better use of time if we could do it at the beginning rather than the end.
Okay. And I, I do know that you guys have been on since the beginning and I appreciate your patience. Um, so, all right.
Valencia's can, in fact, can schedule a Zoom meeting yourself, yourselves and, and your design professional, and we could get a lot accomplished just to have a phone call.
Okay, so we, we'll be in the meeting together with you and Mr. Mear?
Yeah, I think that would be good, you know, uh, you can, you can set that up through Kirsten. I have Zoom meetings with applicants every Thursday. Want to meet next Thursday? That'd be fine.
All right, I'll, I'll set that up with him and probably do it this Thursday or next Thursday, wherever works for you.
Okay.
Thank you. That would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
Good night.
Good night.
Whoops. Was there a question?
No.
No. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda, um, is a discussion item, and this is that the town board has recommended or, uh, amending the town board code a number of different sections, but what they really do is address approvals in cases where there are outstanding, um, violations on a property or unpaid, uh, fees on a property. Um, they are, to me, they are pretty straightforward. So, um, they basically require the fees to be paid before proceeding to, before issuing a building permit or another permit. Yes, Jerome?
Uh, they are straightforward, but, um, in reading the wording, uh, it doesn't, you know, include submission or review of applications that have been submitted. And I would be in favor of not accepting and reviewing submissions until, uh, the fees are paid. It just applies to, uh, permits and certain certification or approval.
Yeah, I Yeah, Jerome, I, I just, if I, not that I've been involved, you know, directly in the formulation of, of the amendments, but you, you're correct that certain municipalities deal with this issue differently. Some some have a prohibition for even accepting or processing an application. Um, so that basically the admission ticket, you know, is to, you know, i- is to pay before you can process. Um, and others are just taking a step back, which is apparently what the town board is considering doing, saying you can go ahead and process. You know, it's just that the ultimate permit or approval will not be issued until you, the violation's cured or the, or the fines paid. You know, I, if, if, if it's the sense of the board that you would like to recommend or suggest that the additional step be taken, we could do that in the form of a letter to the town board. Or if the board is satisfied with what's been proposed, we can, we can indicate that what's proposed is acceptable. I, it's really a, a board call.
Sure. Well, I mean, my opinion and recommendation would be to include a, a non-review of, uh, of applications until it's done, only because, uh, it takes our time. It, it fills our agenda. And then if they delay in paying fees, even after we've begun spending time processing, it's, you know, it could be a waste of time.
Well, are these, uh, uh, excuse me, Jerome, are these, um, is this a proposal for paying violations or, or violations that have, that have, where there's been a, a resolution and there has been no, um, I guess, uh, you know, penalty paid in or
Either way.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
Not enough, but, but
I'm not so sure about that.
Yeah, but, but one of, one of the outs, one of the outs that is a carve out in, in what's in front of the board is that, and it is that each of these says that notwithstanding the above, you can go ahead and issue to specifically address an outstanding violation or an immediate hazardous condition. you can go ahead and issue to specifically address an outstanding violation or an immediate hazardous condition.
Right.
Well, that's.
You know, yeah, so I agree with what you're saying is, yeah, you know, if we, if you were to say we can't even process an application when there's a violation, what we just did, for example, with Valencia, that would all be upended because typically the, a wetland violation comes to the, to the board and what we try to do is get the applicant to submit an application to process it and cure it. So maybe, maybe the, maybe the distinction is if there are existing fines, that's a, that's a, that's a bar to processing, but you know, if there's a violation, you can still go forward and try to, you know, if the application is intended to try to cure the violation.
Well, I agree with that.
Well, it would seem to me that we're depriving, we might be depriving someone of due process if there's a outstanding violation that hasn't been adjudicated or determined in some way. And then you kind of have the applicant by the short hairs because you've got to resolve the violation and maybe he's going to resolve it to his detriment, which means, I guess, money to the town. You know, and it's kind of like, I mean, it, it looks a little, little strange under those circumstances that a violation pops up all the time that he's looking to, he or she is looking to make some sort of application.
Yeah, so I think, I think that's a good point, and I think, I think you need to, I think you need to, you need to remove the, you know, if you're going to have, if you're going to have a provision that says you can't even process something, that you would have to take the violation piece out of that. You know, if it's an adjudicated fine and it's been, you know, it's been levied and it's haven't been paid, then that, that's, I can see that as being a bar to going forward, but if it's a violation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with that. I agree with that, Greg.
Yes, I agree.
But take the case, take the case where it's a developer or, and, you know, he's moving, he's got a violation on one parcel, but he wants to, you know, second parcel approved. I'm thinking of like the Bowway property, two, two lots and first lots approved, but yet there's a fee that hasn't been paid. I don't think we should be processing the second application. Not, not, not violations, but in the normal course of development or construction.
So you're saying that it's not specific to a property, it's specific to the applicant. If an applicant owes a fine, then they should pay the fine before any other applications by the applicant are even processed, started to be processed.
Well, that's, that's probably true, yeah. I hadn't thought of it in terms of.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with that because you could have someone who, if they do have a large fine on a piece of property, but yet they want to develop another piece of property. They could just, the property with the fine could go fallow, right? Do nothing.
Yeah.
And yet they are permitted to go forward.
Yeah.
And, and have their other application heard by us.
Yeah.
So I don't know, that might be a legal issue.
Oh, we have that. That happened on.
Yeah.
Well, what, what, it goes, it goes back to what we were saying before. I mean, if, if there's an outstanding fine on, on the books after an adjudicated issue and an applicant comes to the town with an outstanding fine, I guess, entered by, by the town, right, Judd? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
So I mean, that, that's one thing, and I think we have certain rights in that, the town would have certain rights in that regard. But I would be greatly concerned, and I don't know if we're off this now, but I would be greatly concerned if the applicant had to come and adjudicate open violations before he was able to address a new, a new application for something. So I think I would want to see back the distinction.
Is, is applicant defined? I'm just thinking about a situation, hearing what everybody's talking about. Let's say it's an individual and then they acquire the property as an LLC and.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, if, if there is a definition of applicant, it would be in each of the chapters. Because again, the, the amendments relate not only to the zoning code two twenty, but to the wetland code, the subdivision and the building code. I'm not, I, I often, I don't think applicant is, is defined in, you know, in the definition section of any of those provisions. And you could sidestep it, like you said, Rich, by forming an LLC, you know.
Well, I think, I think it is addressed here where it says it shall be, no approval or conditional approval shall be issued soon to this chapter if there is an outstanding violation or unpaid fine with regard to the property that is the subject of such application. So it's kind of limits it, so.
But Maureen is suggesting to expand that to, right.
Right. So it is limiting it, but maybe we should expand it.
Yeah, to the owner.
It's part of the property, though. They don't go to an individual. Violations in, in any of these violations, wetland zoning subdivision, it really go to the property.
So could, could someone who has a violation and a fine imposed on a property, could they sell that property? Where does the fine go?
The, I can speak directly to the wetland code because that at present is really one of the weaknesses of the enforcement provision of the wetland code. When you impose a fine under the wetland chapter, it does not, there's no provision in the, in the town code that automatically converts that to a lien or anything that's recorded against the property. So it doesn't show up. You know, it may show up on a municipal violation search, maybe, but even that, I'm not so sure in Lewisboro. But it does not, it's not a recorded encumbrance against the property. And at present, the, the way the wetland code is written is that if a fine is imposed by the planning board and the, the, the fine goes unpaid, the town's remedy is basically for the town board to authorize a lawsuit to collect the fine. It's like, it's like, you know, another generation of legal work to try to collect the fine, so.
Maybe that's what this town board should be focusing on, and instead of writing a, a sort of a vague type of, you know, proposed amendment that leaves these issues open. So I think that's a separate issue, Judd, then.
No, yeah, I, yeah, I, I think that, I think this is one step that was being considered as a way to try to tighten that. You know, tighten over, find another way to capture some of those fines in the event, you know, someone comes back, but.
I mean, why couldn't I sell the property to myself? One, one is Maureen McGuire and one has.
Well, that might not be an honest life transaction under the circumstances. That transaction could conceivably be voided, but there might be a situation where you would legitimately sell it to someone else.
Yeah.
I do recall one where we had a person who bought something with an outstanding violation on it and he had to end up paying and fixing.
Really?
Yep, yep.
Well, I think the other, the other problem we've run into have been, you know, purchasers who acquire without a full understanding of, of an existing wetland permit. You know, for example, the septic pumping, that was one of the issues with septic pumping that I buy and I didn't realize that the wetland permit requires me to pump every year or every two years or, you know, there's some other, you know, particular condition attached to the wetland permit that the, you know, the, the new owner is unaware of.
So there's a, so, so there's no limiting of the C of O, in other words, if there's a fine.
Tried to, what we tried, yeah, I mean, internally, from an administrative standpoint, we've tried to tighten that up to make sure that our wetland permits find their way to the building department file. But that's a problem that happened in the past.
Judd, is there a better way to legislatively address what the board is trying to do that another municipality may have done more effectively?
You know, I, I, look, I think that they're trying to take the, the one step forward in terms of saying that they, that there'll be no permits issued. This is pretty standard. Jerome's point was, like other municipalities that go even further and say, you shouldn't even process. I think there's, I think there's a way for, for language like that to be, well, I think the concept can be proposed to the town board by the planning board, if that's what you want to do for fines, carving out violations, as Greg said, and then, you know, leave it to the town board to try to find the appropriate, you know, the appropriate language. It can be done.
Yeah, I think that's, that's good, and if they decide, you know, that it's too difficult, then they won't do it. But I think we should recommend that fines be paid before before permit, before the process, before the processing of applications or for permits or for building, building inspector work, so.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Other than for the remediation of that outstanding violation.
Yeah, and if it's an outstanding violation, then obviously that's exempt, but we still would look for payment of, of any historical clients or something. But I think, so I think, can we?
If you, if that's acceptable in terms of what you want to say, if we could just get a motion and authorize Jander, sign a letter, we can get that out to the town board.
Okay, does anyone want to make that motion?
Well, leaving the, the issue of open unadjudicated violations out or making?
Out, out, yeah, leaving them out, Greg, yeah, because I, I think we're all in agreement that we don't want, you, you don't want, you don't want someone who hasn't been found guilty or is pled guilty to a violation to then be told you're hamstrung and you gotta, right.
Well, Jerome, since this is the Jerome clause, the Jerome revision.
No, I'm, I'm going to.
I want to be worried what you said.
I'll defer to the legal minds here, Frank, Frank. You know the intent.
All right, well, I'll make, I'll make the motion, whatever the motion is.
Yeah, the motion, yeah, the, the motion is for, yeah, the, the motion is for the, the board to communicate to the town board that they would, they want the town board to consider expanding the amendments to prohibit the processing of applications when there is an unpaid fine on the property and/or by the property owner. I, I think.
To ensure no due process implications.
Yeah, right, and, and to leave the, and, but, but to allow, but to allow, you know, those instances where there's a violation to proceed, you know, you know, for those applications to proceed.
Okay, and you know, before we make that motion, which I would, I would make, can, can we just, I did not look at these numbers, but ninety-two dash one E and one ninety-five dash three D, two seventeen dash three E, two twenty dash forty-four E and two, two twenty dash seventy-four E. Can we just confirm that those are, you know, for the wetland zoning?
Yeah, and Greg, yeah, Greg, ninety-two is the building chapter, is the building code.
Right.
One ninety-five is the subdivision regulations, two seventeen is wetlands.
Right.
And two twenty is the zoning code.
Right.
And the two twenty forty-four involves site plan approval and two twenty seventy-four involves the Z B A.
Okay.
Okay.
Because, because we, you know, in the past, and it may be before some of everyone's times here, but we have had these things come in front of us. And we've talked about one thing, it turned out to be something else that, you know, we're talking about. So, you know, just with.
Are you applying bait to switch?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So with that little proviso, I'm glad that we did that. But I would make the motion along the lines of what Judd had set out and along the lines of what Jerome had set forth regarding a recommendation involving on the record fines for potential applicants.
Okay, and just to clarify that, that is to allow me to sign a letter drafted by Judd and send it to the town board?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
One suggestion?
Yeah.
Can we add the stormwater chapter? One eighty-nine?
It's a good idea.
You should probably make that suggestion because they, they may have had a reason for not putting it in, but we should make that suggestion to.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, so we have a motion. It's an extended motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maureen. Any further discussion?
Um, Judd will double check the appropriate sections.
Yes, I will.
Okay, anything else? Then I'll ask for a vote. Maureen?
Aye.
Uh, Jerome? Jerome?
He looks frozen. He looks frozen there.
Okay, Rich?
Aye.
Uh, Greg?
Aye.
And I say aye as well, and Jerome?
This, this will be a new entry in the minutes. Frozen.
I think he might have just gone away and come, all right.
There he is.
And will you say aye to this motion? Oh.
Jerome.
Jerome, yes, I'm.
We need a thumbs up from Jerome on the motion.
Yeah, we, okay, thank you. Yeah. I don't, okay, so then, that's tough. All right, well, the next thing is, we have planning board meeting dates, a proposed set of meeting dates for twenty twenty-one. So it's really nice to think that twenty twenty might be coming to an end. So I will say that we've done the normal approach of, of pushing the February meeting from the back or one week later in February, which we tend to do. And, and I want to say thank you to Jan, who actually gave the applicants a couple of days because I sort of hate it when the the next application is due on the same day as our meeting. So it's, he gave us a couple of days for that as part of the proposal. But so with that, do, does anyone have any concerns or conflicts or anything with this, this proposed calendar? Do we have to?
I would make a motion to accept the calendar, yeah.
I'll move to accept the calendar estimate.
Okay, Jerome, a second?
A second.
Greg, okay, and we'll go through. Maureen?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Jerome? And I also say aye. Okay, and in case that wasn't clear, I'm not sure I said aye to the end of the town board discussion, but I, I meant to. Okay, after we were trying to get Jerome so hard, I don't know that I ended up saying it. All right, the next one is the minutes of.
Move we approve the September minutes as submitted.
Okay.
I just caught one typo in the first page, so I'm Janet Anderson and I'm here by call, just to clean that up. At the first sentence on page one.
Okay, geez. Thank you. So as amended, you was, were you seconding it as amended?
I accept that amendment.
All right, the second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, Maureen? We're looking for a vote on this for the, oh, you weren't here last week. Never mind. You have to, last week, last month. Rich?
Aye.
Uh, Greg?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
And I also say fine. So with that, our next meeting date is November seventeenth, and I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so it looks like, I think, Rich move first and Maureen, I'll take yours as a second. So assuming no discussion. Maureen?
Aye.
Uh, Rich?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
And I will also adjourn, so have a wonderful Halloween, everyone, and however, however.
Social distance Halloween.